All right, can we put the first slide, please? So, welcome everybody to Capitola Town Hall. My name is Jamie Dolcino, I'm the city manager here at the City of Capitola. Because this is a little bit of an unorthodox city council meeting, I will hold the mic closer to my mouth. In addition, we are going to do a roll call to kick off this meeting very quickly. I will note that Councilmember, uh, Mayor Clark is here in attendance. Councilmember Jensen is in attendance in the room. Councilmember Peterson is in attendance in the room. Councilmember Morgan had a pre-existing commitment, she announced last meeting and is not able to attend. And Councilmember Orbach, I believe is, she's on her way. So we will announce when she enters the room. The city did receive 12 items of additional material this evening for tonight's meeting. That material is available over there on the black table and posted on the city's website. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mayor Clark to kick us off.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me well? Great. Welcome everyone to this Town Hall, special Capitola City Council meeting. It's not often that we get together like this, and I'm glad we are. It's nice to see a lot of familiar faces. This is a very important thing for all of us. Again, thank you all for coming. There's one thing I'd like to ask. If we can refrain from clapping, applauding, and cheering so that we can make everyone feel welcome here. They may have different views or different values. But again, we want to make it, um, nice for everybody to have a good time. Retired Chief Jim Farley will be our facilitator today. And I had the privilege of working with him when he was with the City of Santa Cruz as the Fire Chief. So it's awesome to have him here. Chief Farley is an Aptos resident?
Yeah.
Yes? Okay. So, uh, again, it's great to have everybody here. If we could, uh, keep it civil, I think we'll get some stuff done today. So thanks again for everybody for coming. Chief, take it away. Fantastic. Appreciate that, Mayor. So as it was posted, here is the agenda. I'm not going to go through each item, it was posted, but roughly we have different sections. So the sections are, first, we're going to go through and do a presentation from staff. That's about 35 minutes. The next, we're going to actually answer the questions that were submitted online. And so, uh, I'll give you what the methodology was with regards to how we determine the final questions. And, and then the staff will provide answers to that. Following that, we will then go into public comment. I will give you the specifics of parameters with regards to public comment. And then we'll wrap it up. If there's any questions that may come up during public comment that have not already been answered, then we will, the staff, not me, but staff will try to answer those questions for you. All right. I would like to take a moment and recognize the people that are up front here, that are going to be the staff, that are representing the different, um, entities that are going to be doing the presentations. So we have Grace from the RTC. We have Rob from the County of Santa Cruz. Jessica from, uh, the City of Capitola. Of course, the mayor's here. Chloe is here. She will be assisting me once we get to public comment. She's from the City of Capitola. Sam is from the City of Capitola, and then you all know Jamie. All right. Yes, sir.
Councilmember Orbach is now.
Councilmember Orbach is here. Welcome. Thank you for being here. All right. Uh, so with that, we're going to go ahead and get straight into our presentations. Thank you, Jim. Good evening. Can we hear you okay? Great. Thank you, everyone, for being here. It's great to see so much interest in this project. As Jim mentioned, my name is Rob Tidmore. I work for the County of Santa Cruz. And I'm the project manager for the Coastal Rail Trail Segments 10 and 11 project. Uh, the County of Santa Cruz is the lead agency. And the project team has been working with the RTC and the City of Capitola over the past four years to develop the design and the environmental documents for the project. The Segments 10 and 11 project we'll be discussing tonight is part of the larger coastal rail trail, which runs 32 miles from Davenport in the north to Paharo in the south along the Santa Cruz Branch Rail Line, which was purchased by the RTC in 2012. The alignment of the coastal rail trail was established in the Monterey Bay Sanctuary Seated Trail Master Plan, or MBST, produced by the RTC and approved by the City of Capitola in 2015. The map on the screen shows the status of different segments of the entire 32-mile coastal rail trail. Areas in green have been completed and areas in red are funded through construction. Segments 10 and 11 are roughly in the middle of the screen and represent 4.2 miles of trail from Live Oak to Aptos. This table shows the estimated costs for the different phases of the project. These estimates are from the summer of 2023 and do not include potential cost savings from design changes and other value engineering efforts that have taken place since then. Updated cost estimates for the project are expected late this summer. This table shows the sources and amounts of funding that have been secured for the project. $17.4 million in Measure D after-transportation funds have been programmed by the RTC for this project. This money funded the preliminary design and environmental review and provided the required ATP grant match. In 2022, the county was awarded a $67.6 million Active Transportation Program, or ATP, grant from the state. This is the largest ATP grant in state history and is the main funding source for the project. The deadlines for this grant program are what is driving the project's schedule. Most recently in 2024, the RTC secured a $19.5 million federal raise grant to fund Segments 8 through 12 of the rail trail. $8.4 million of that is earmarked for Segments 10 and 11. Therefore, total project funding is $93.4 million. Based on the 2023 cost estimates that I showed on the previous slide, the project needs approximately $18.3 million in additional funding. However, similar to the last slide, this number does not include potential cost savings from value engineering efforts and will be updated later this summer. This is a draft schedule for the project for the next three years. The environmental review phase is shown by the dark green at the top of the slide. Final design and permitting is shown in blue. And I'm sorry, that's a little bit hard to read. A little bit. Right-of-way is shown in olive green and then construction in yellow on the right of the screen. Grant deadlines are shown in red, most notably the deadline to request construction funding by April of 2027. Requesting construction funding cannot happen until final design and right-of-way are complete. A full two years is required to complete the final design and right-of-way. So it is critical to identify a final alignment this month to stay on schedule and meet the grant deadline. The project is expected to go out to bid in late 2027 after allocation of construction funding from the ATP grant. This is a map showing Segment 10 in green, with the Capitola city limits over late on the map for reference in dark gray. Segments 10 starts at 17th Avenue and is routed along the rail line all the way to 47th Avenue. It does not deviate onto surface streets, which I understand is a misperception currently circulating. Segment 10 is 1.5 miles long. Segment 11, shown in purple, starts at 47th Avenue and travels along Cliff Drive. After Opal Street, the trail is routed onto city streets through the village, which is shown by the dashed purple line. At Monterey Avenue, the trail continues parallel to Park Avenue before entering New Brighton State Beach at Coronado Street. The trail passes through the State Beach and through the Sea Cliff neighborhood, past Mar Vista Drive, and ends in State Park Drive in Aptos. Segment 11 is 2.7 miles long. The project team has conducted extensive public outreach to inform the public and receive feedback, uh, on the project. The slide shows the 26 public engagement events that have been held for the project over the last four years. The project was previously presented to the Capitola City Council in March 2023, October 2023, and most recently in February 2025. As part of the preliminary design and environmental review process, the county analyzed the ultimate trail configuration shown on the screen, as well as several alternatives, including the interim trail configuration. The ultimate trail locates the trail next to the rail line, consistent with the MBST master plan. The multi-use trail is generally 12 feet wide and is 4.2 miles long. This is the alignment that was included in the county's ATP grant and which was approved by the Board of Supervisors last year after certification of the final EIR. So to illustrate the proposed design of the project, these are two views of the 41st Avenue Railroad Crossing, looking east. The image on the left is existing, the image on the right is proposed. From 17th Avenue to 47th Avenue, the trail will be on the inland side of the railroad tracks, as shown in the graphic, and will be continuous within the rail corridor. The existing tracks, which are currently located roughly in the middle of the corridor, will be relocated 5 to 7 feet towards the coastal side of the right-of-way. The trail crossing at 41st will be improved with activated flashing beacons to alert drivers, cross bike paint, and bulbouts to shorten the crossing distance. These are two views of the Jade Street Park area. Again, existing on the left, proposed on the right, showing the trail along the edge of the park. After the 47th Avenue of street crossing, the trail switches from the inland side of the tracks to the coastal side of the tracks. An enlarged corner bulbout at the bottom of the screen reduces vehicle turning speeds from Cortola and provides better safety and more road for trail users. The track relocation that I mentioned on the previous slide ends just east of 47th Avenue on the bottom of the screen. Uh, this is, these are images of the Cliff Drive area. Again, existing on the left, proposed on the right. From 47th Avenue, running along Cliff Drive, to roughly in line with Opal Street and the existing crosswalk, the trail will be on the coastal side of the tracks, where the grades are flat and there is ample right-of-way. The existing parking along Cliff Drive will be reconfigured to parallel parking. The trail ends at Opal Street, where the image on the top right shows a small plaza, a staircase to connect to the Jewel Box neighborhood above, and a crosswalk across Cliff Drive, where trail users will connect with the existing bicycle and pedestrian network through the village. To address concerns about user conflict in the village, the project is proposing several improvements. On the screen is a graphic showing existing conditions on the top and proposed on the bottom. There is currently no sidewalk on this stretch of Cliff Drive and pedestrians must walk in the existing Class 2 bike lane on the coastal side of the street. To address that, the project is being reconfigured to narrow travel lanes and create a 4-foot-wide delineated pedestrian path on the coastal side of the road. The project will also enhance the existing Class 2 bike lanes with green paint to improve visibility. These improvements will increase overall safety in this area and reduce potential conflicts between bikes and pedestrians. This is a map showing a proposed route on existing sidewalks and bike lanes through Capitola Village between trail endpoints at Cliff Drive and Park Avenue, as well as associated Segment 10 and 11 project improvements in the village. The dashed purple line shows the continuous pedestrian facility created by the Cliff Drive improvements combined with existing sidewalks. The green lime work shows existing Class 2 and Class 3 bike lanes that will be enhanced with green paint to make them more visible. The project will also install directional signage to provide clear wayfinding for trail users, and that is shown by the, the black and white, uh, icons on the, on the screen. Uh, at Park Avenue, the trail begins again and continues to State Park Drive in Aptos. The city also has plans for longer-term pedestrian and bicycle improvements in the village. And I'll turn it over to Jessica Khan, local office director, who will provide more information.
Thanks, Rob. Um, so those improvements that are currently being proposed as part of the rail trail project in the village were developed with the RTC city staff and county staff as part of the EIR process. So this was something that city staff was very much involved in. Um, anybody who's lived in Capitola knows that there is serious congestion problems, vehicle, bikes, pedestrians, in the village during the summer, and really, all of the time. We have multiple studies that have been done over multiple decades in the village and this has been looked at a lot. Um, a lot of projects have come out of those studies. The white sidewalks came out of some of those studies in the past. Some bulbouts on the Escolna that are a little more recent have also come out of those studies. Um, these improvements proposed with the rail trail project are more of an interim measure. This is not to say that this is the best we can do for the Capitola Village. Um, to that end, RTC and county staff helped us develop an Active Transportation Planning Grant through the Sustainable Transportation Planning Grant Program to do an active transportation plan focused on circulation in the village, but then also throughout the city arterials so we can get from our parks, our libraries, 41st Avenue, to and through the village. The idea is that we propose a, um, we do this project, we have public outreach, we come up with long-term plans so we can get funding to do these improvements in the village for really permanent solutions that not only facilitate travel coming through the village, but also to the village. Um, we have done these planning efforts before. Another example of a planning effort that the city has been working on the past few years is Park Avenue, which we're going to transition into, uh, next slide, please. So as part of the Park Avenue alignment, next slide, uh, the city has been working on a Park Avenue traffic calming project. So, uh, the city from time to time does speed studies. That's how we set speed limits in cities. And the most recent one was in 2020. And part of the fallout of that, um, study was that there was a lot of perceived and actual speeding issues on Park Avenue. Um, the current conditions on Park Avenue, there is a more recently constructed sidewalk. Previous to that, there was no sidewalk on Park Avenue. So there's sidewalk on one side of the street. And then the other side of the street is an unimproved rolled shoulder. So there is quite a few leadedupped trees, there's some parking in some spots. Um, and then we have bike lanes on either side, which are not separated facilities. So it's what's called the Class 2 bike lane. And there's no bollards, there's no division of the roadway and the bike way, it is just paint. Uh, next slide, please. So, over 2022 to 2024, the city did a significant amount of outreach with the neighborhood and, um, other constituents to address traffic safety concerns on Park Avenue specifically. Um, so what really came out of that was concern for traffic safety. Besides speeds, really, uh, a desire to improve transportation for bikes, pedestrians, a lot of children going to school, to this school, travel through Park Avenue, um, a support for narrowing lanes, which is shown to slow traffic over time. Um, and then other general concerns about traffic patterns, cut-through traffic, uh, what improvements would do to the visual impact. There's a lovely view of the ocean on Park Avenue. Worries about loss of parking for the community. And then also really stressing that community input is really important in any kind of changes that would happen on Park Avenue. Uh, next slide, please. Um, so based on that community input and what we really could do with the budget that we had allocated for this project, we came up with a preliminary plan to do some improvements on Park Avenue. So that was creating buffer bike lanes with paint, narrowing the lanes, doing some intersection upgrades, some of which have already been completed with other projects, um, putting up additional speed feedback signs and some other pedestrian safety improvements. From this time, 2022 to 2024, obviously, the rail trail project has had significant development. Um, and to that end, we have been coordinating with the county and the RTC about the rail trail improvements throughout the city and particularly along Park Avenue, which I will let, uh, Rob get further into.
Thank you, Jessica. And I'm going to stand up, um, so you guys can see us. Here we go. We didn't have a podium before, but Jim hooked us up. Thanks, Jim. Now I can't see my notes. All right. There we are. Uh, so there are several advantages to the Park Avenue alignment compared to the coastal alignment, which led to the recommendation by county, RTC, and Capitola staff to make this change. Uh, the first is that it requires less infrastructure and will therefore cost, or reduce, construction costs. In response to increased cost estimates in 2023, the RTC completed a value engineering study for the project in 2024 to find ways to reduce project cost. The value engineering study encompassed the entire 4.2-mile project and suggested 12 strategies to modify the design to save costs, including the Park Avenue alignment, modifying wall types, changing viaduct designs, and replacing viaducts with retaining walls. The VE team estimated the strategies could save up to a total of $25 million, although the project team thinks the savings will be less. As a result of the VE study that county and the RTC are implementing, many of the suggested changes along the entire project length, including here along Park Avenue. Another advantage is that locating the trail along Park Avenue improves connectivity to the Cliffwood Heights neighborhood. The Park Avenue alignment improves ocean views between Grove Lane and Coronado. It also offers better public visibility of the trail, potentially increasing safety. It aligns with and achieves the goals of the city's traffic calming project that Jessica just mentioned, going beyond what the city could afford to build with their own money to build a truly separated trail facility. It eliminates conflict with future passenger rail and reduces long-term impact, impacts to monarch habitat if passenger rail is pursued. It eliminates conflict with properties along Escolona Drive that encroach into the rail right-of-way and would need to be removed for the coastal alignment. And finally, the trail will be further from the eroding coastal wealth. This slide shows an aerial view of the Park Avenue corridor between Monterey Avenue and Grove Lane and depicts the previous design of the coastal alignment of the trail in yellow. The existing tracks are in red. The images along the bottom are oriented with Park Avenue on the left. They show the topography that separates the coastal alignment from the adjacent Cliffwood Heights and Depot Hill neighborhoods. They also show the large retaining walls that are needed to support the trail due to the existing steep slopes and the viaduct that is needed to cross Escolona Gulch. This infrastructure is expensive and the project needs to reduce costs to stay on budget. Sometimes it works. There we go. Uh, moving east, this is, this is an aerial view of the Park Avenue corridor between Grove Lane and Coronado Street. Again, the coastal alignment is in yellow, the existing tracks are in red. The cross-sections along the bottom of the screen show the retaining walls that are needed to cut the trail into the existing embankment that's on the coast side of the tracks. This is expensive and the existing topography there blocks ocean views for roughly half of this area. A viaduct is also needed on the steep slopes above the State Beach parking lot. So for all the reasons I mentioned previously, county, RTC, and city staff proposed to move the trail roughly 45 to 60 feet inland along the southern edge of the Park Avenue right-of-way, shown by the dashed yellow line. Red arrows show our new crosswalks and rectangular rapid flashing beacons are proposed, or RFBs, which provide safe access from the trail to the surrounding streets. These trail access points to and from the Cliffwood Heights neighborhood do not exist for the coastal alignment because the trail is down in the rail corridor. The image on the top left is an example of a crosswalk with the RFBs for those who aren't familiar with that design. They're the, they're the buttons that you push to activate and then the bright yellow, orange flashing lights alert drivers that you're trying to cross the street. Um, and I would just note that, um, we did hear concerns about the visibility of a crosswalk in front of the 600 Park Avenue apartments. Um, we do expect that the elevated flashing beacons there will eliminate visibility concerns, but we'll be evaluating all of these crossings for safety and visibility with the traffic engineer during the final design. Again, cross-sections of the trail are along the bottom of the screen. As you can see, walls are still needed for the Park Avenue alignment in some locations, but to a lesser degree than for the coastal alignment. And I would just note that the cross-section in the middle of the screen illustrates one of two areas where the trail grade is lower than the roadway grade. This is needed to maintain an ADA-accessible longitudinal slope of the trail in areas where the road slopes steeply. All right. So this is an image showing the proposed Park Avenue alignment, as well as the improved trail connectivity from side streets via crosswalks and RFBs between Grove Lane and Coronado. Again, the cross-sections along the bottom show the condition of the trail. In this area, between Grove Lane and Coronado, no walls are needed for this portion of the Park Avenue alignment because the trail is within the footprint of the existing roadway. The image on the bottom right, uh, shows the Park and Coronado intersection as proposed. Pedestrians would access the trail via the crosswalk on the west side of the intersection. Westbound cyclists would access the trail if desired via enhanced green bike lane striping at the intersection. And just east of the crosswalk, the trail ramps down to the existing railroad grade. A formal rail crossing provides access to the new staircase that connects to New Brighton Beach State Parking Lot, just to the west. This crossing also provides access to the remainder of the Segment 11 trail on the coast side of the tracks as it continues east and south 1.8 miles to State Park Drive in Aptos. The trail along Park Avenue would be 12 feet wide and paved with asphalt. So it is similar in design to the previous coastal alignment. I know that there are many of you here concerned about safety. So I wanted to emphasize, uh, with this slide that we are not simply proposing to put paint on the roadway. This will be a separated Class 1 multi-use trail adjacent to the roadway, not an on-street facility. It will be vertically separated from the roadway by a 6-inch curb and horizontally separated by a minimum 3-foot buffer. On the screen are two example images to illustrate what is proposed for Park Avenue. The image on the left is a local similar example. This is West Cliff Drive, showing a multi-use trail adjacent to a vehicle lane. The difference, however, is that West Cliff Drive in this location does not have a horizontal buffer between the trail and the vehicle lane, whereas the Park Avenue alignment would. The image on the right is from Santa Barbara, showing a paved asphalt trail adjacent to the roadway with both a vertical curb and a horizontal buffer. In this case, the horizontal buffer is made of decomposed granite and boulders. The cross-section on the bottom of the screen is what is proposed for Park Avenue. As we move into final design, we can explore options for additional safety treatments in the horizontal buffer if desired by the community and directed by the city. These images show two options for how to build the trail along Park Avenue. The views here are from Grove Lane looking west toward the village. The Escolona Gulch Monarch site is to the left of the image, just off-screen. Option A, shown on top, preserves the inland bike lane to provide more flexibility for cyclists that would prefer to use the on-street Class 2 bike lane. Option B on the bottom eliminates the inland bike lane and shifts the southern edge of the trail inland. This will result in lower retaining walls and reduce costs and may result in less true removal and less impacts to monarch habitat, particularly in this location where the trail is adjacent to the Escolona Gulch Monarch Grove. Both options include a 6-inch vertical curb and 3-foot-wide horizontal buffer between the trail and the roadway. The horizontal buffer is depicted by the, the tan strip next to the trail. They also include elements of the traffic calming project such as narrow travel lanes and speed feedback signs to reduce vehicle speeds. And in the middle of each image, you can see the additional crosswalk with the flashing beacons proposed at the 600 Park Avenue driveway, which will improve connectivity to the neighborhood and safe access across Park Avenue. Uh, moving east, these images show different views of the same two options. In this case, the views are from just past Correo, looking east toward New Brighton State Beach. Again, both options have a 6-inch vertical curb and horizontal buffer between the trail and the roadway like the previous section. They also include narrow travel lanes and speed feedback signs. Option A is again on top, preserves the inland bike lane to provide more flexibility to cyclists. And option B on the bottom eliminates the inland bike lane and in this location allows for a wider buffer between vehicles and trail users from Grove Lane to Coronado, which is shown again by the tan strip, uh, in the images next to the trail. Option B may also reduce the need for retaining walls as the wall approaches Coronado Street and may save costs. And finally, the perspectives illustrate the improved ocean views from the raised vantage point of Park Avenue compared to the original coastal alignment where the views of the ocean were obstructed by the existing embankments on the coast side of the tracks. So what happens next? A contract amendment with a consultant team is required to move forward with final design for the project regardless of the Park Avenue decision. Approval of that contract amendment will go to the county Board of Supervisors on April 29th. Depending on a decision from City Council, there are two directions the project could go. If City Council supports moving forward with the Park Avenue alignment, additional environmental review is required. So county staff would request a second amendment at the board on April 29th to add environmental review of the Park Avenue alignment since it was not included in the project's EIR. Then, RTC staff would request funding for environmental review at the May 1st RTC meeting. The project team would then conduct additional environmental review, including potential impacts to monarch habitat over the summer. And after completing environmental review, the project team would return to City Council to approve and issue permits for the entire project, including Park Avenue, likely later this fall. If City Council does not support moving forward with the Park Avenue alignment, county staff would request board approval on April 29th for the final design contract amendment only. would request board approval on April 29th for the final design contract amendment only. The RTC and county would then seek support from the RTC to proceed with the coastal alignment at the May 1 RTC meeting despite the increased costs and feasibility constraints. As a backup, we would also explore potentially eliminating the 0.7-mile Park Avenue section of trail with Caltrans staff via a grant scope change, but this may not be feasible without significantly impacting the grant funding. And then the project team would return to City Council to approve and issue permits for the entire project, including the coastal alignment, likely this fall. So I'm now going to hand it off to Samantha Zutler, City Attorney for the City of Capitola, who will discuss Measure L.
Good evening. Sorry. Okay, so Measure L was enacted by the voters in November of 2018. As you likely know, it was put on the ballot by petition as ballot initiatives. It's in, it was then codified into the city's municipal code, which just means that it's written onto the code. If you go onto the website and look up the code, you'll see Measure L there in Chapter 8.72. The purpose is stated in the code, and there are several findings in the code that elaborate on this. And then there is a section down below that speaks to implementation of Measure L. And the implementation, the two primary sections say that the city, through its constituent departments, shall take all steps necessary to preserve and utilize the corridor and the trestle for active transportation and recreation. Active transportation is defined in another place in the code in the definitions section as transportation that does not include wheels. Well, it's not defined in exactly those words, but that's what it means. No city of Capitola department, agency, or employee shall expend any funds or resources related to the construction, reconstruction, operation, maintenance, financing, marketing, or signage, or detour of the trail onto Capitola streets or sidewalks. There are a few phrases in, phrases and terms in Sections A and B that are not defined up above. Most importantly, resources, detour, several in Section B that are not defined in the actual ordinance itself. And really, this is a question, and we'll get to this question later in the evening, but interpretation of the city's codes is a question for the City Council. Someone said, "I don't think so." Okay, it, I'll just answer. It's really a question for the City Council. I give legal advice to the City Council, and the City Council makes the policy decision.
Good evening. Thanks so much for having me today and for coming to get informed about what's happening with the coastal rail trail projects. We really appreciate your time and the dialogue around what's happening in the City of Capitola. My name is Grace Blakesley, and I'm a transportation planner for the Santa Cruz County Regional Transportation Commission. RTC staff endeavors to provide information to the public and decision-makers that support transportation solutions that are vibrant, sustainable, and equitable in our community. We are seeing the potential for significant investment in our regional transportation system. We can see the work that's underway on the highway, and we've opened awarded significant grants for improvements to our bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure. This is unprecedented in our community so far. In response to the request from the City of Capitola City Council, I'm here to provide information about key aspects of the coastal rail trail development and the Santa Cruz branch rail line right-of-way. The coastal rail trail is a regional transportation project that extends across and through the unincorporated county of Santa Cruz. It connects with the city of Santa Cruz, the city of Watsonville, and the portion that traverses the city of Capitola, which is what we're here to talk about today. We've heard questions from members of the public and decision-makers about the potential use of the Capitola trestle for bicycle and pedestrian trails, so I'm going to focus on that now. So first, I'm going to try to address the question about providing both rail and bicycle and pedestrian trail across Soquel Creek within the Santa Cruz branch rail line right-of-way. As you know, the Capitola trestle is an expansive bridge that extends across Soquel Creek and is actually built out of five bridges as shown here. It includes concrete bridges, wrought iron bridges, and several timber bridges. RTC is frequently asked why the current coastal rail trail project that is funded by the state fund, funded by the state grant that we're discussing tonight, doesn't include a bridge across Soquel Creek and within the rail right-of-way. RTC has looked into this option and determined that a bicycle and pedestrian bridge cannot be attached to the existing Capitola trestle due to the structures types, specifically the timber trestles and the wrought iron bridge portion. Also, the right-of-way in this area is relatively constrained, that it makes it challenging and potentially infeasible to construct a second bridge at the scale of the Capitola trestle and adjacent to the existing rail bridge due to the need for the bridge abutments to have a place to land. Therefore, RTC's proposal is to pursue and replacement of the existing trestle with the combined bicycle and pedestrian bridge over Soquel Creek in place of the existing bridge as part of its future passenger rail project. So this bridge would serve as a passenger and freight rail bridge as well as a combined bicycle and pedestrian bridge. It's important to note that this bridge that we're discussing, that I mentioned here, is not funded as part of the current project that the county of Santa Cruz is the sponsor So next, I'd like to address the question regarding what is required to construct the trail on the existing Capitola trestle, excuse me. From a constructability standpoint, the Capitola trestle could be repurposed into a bicycle and pedestrian trail if structural repairs are completed. In 2021, RTC did an analysis and determined that the estimated cost of the repairs to the trestle were approximately $7 million. RTC has not updated this study since 2021. From a regulatory standpoint, the rail line would need to go through a regulatory process administered by the Federal Surface Transportation Board, which oversees the nation's freight rails transportation system. It's a process for abandoning the rail line for freight purposes to offer other uses. So abandonment of the rail line or a portion of the rail line is a process through which railroads remove a rail line or a portion from the national freight rail network. And as I mentioned, it's under the jurisdiction of the Surface Transportation Board. It's not a local decision. What it does is eliminates the railroad's obligation to provide freight service along the rail line. Rail banking is a false, is a part of the abandonment process, but it stops short of the complete abandonment of the rail line. And it allows for a voluntary agreement where the freight operator and railroad can enter into an agreement with a trail agency for the use of the rail right on an interim basis for trail purposes. There is uncertainty and discussion in our community amongst professionals, community members, and decision-makers about how long it may take to obtain an approval from the Surface Transportation Board for rail banking, and if it could be completed in time to ensure the use of the state funds for construction of the coastal rail trail. And RTC staff expects that there will be opposition to the rail banking process and that the process could extend beyond the time available to meet grant deadlines. All of this creates potential risks to the trail project delivery and the state funding. Given the regulatory process that's required to potentially convert the Capitola trestle to a trail and that construction of the trail across Soquel Creek is unfunded, RTC staff is proposing a phased approach to the bicycle and pedestrian access across Soquel Creek and within the branch rail line right-of-way. In the near term, the project proposes to fund at no cost to the city of Capitola bicycle and pedestrian enhancements within Capitola Village as Rob described, with the expectation that some trail users will use the existing bicycle and pedestrian facilities within the village to connect either end of the coastal rail trail east and west of Capitola Village. In the long term, the Regional Transportation Commission is developing a concept for a new bicycle and pedestrian bridge across Soquel Creek, either combined with or next to a rail bridge. We do have a frequently asked questions on our website that I think is really helpful if you're interested in learning more and have additional questions about the use of the Capitola trestle for a bicycle and pedestrian bridge. Okay. Next, I'll move into discussing a bit about the mobile home encroachments that are located within the city of Capitola as requested by the City Council. Through completion of a record of survey of property boundaries, the Regional Transportation Commission identified a number of encroachments on the publicly-owned right-of-way, including within the city of Capitola. As a public agency, the Regional Transportation Commission must address these encroachments to ensure no gift of public funds and that transportation uses for which public funds were used to purchase the rail line can be completed. Members of the public and decision-makers have asked Regional Transportation Commission staff how are their private residents placed within the public right-of-way? Although all of the history is unknown, it seems that mobile homes were placed within the public right-of-way prior to property owners completing their own property boundary survey, but yet they established plots for mobile home placement of homes that extended beyond their property rights. When the regional transportation completed their property survey, they identified mobile homes within the Castle Mobile Home Estates that were placed within the property, excuse me, previously owned by Union Pacific and now owned by the Regional Transportation Commission on behalf of the public. The property was purchased by the RTC with the intent of developing the corridor for transportation purpose, and the placement of these homes is conflicting with development of the coastal rail trail and future transportation uses. The Regional Transportation Commission notified the property owners and residents in January 2024 of these unauthorized encroachments. This slide here shows the rail corridor. The red, kind of light pinkish, shows the fencing encroachment, and then the darker red with the kind of hatch lines, which is a little hard to see here, shows where the, actually, there's buildings that are overlapping and encroaching with, on the, onto their RTC So the types of encroachments that we found in this area are fences, sheds, some of the mobile homes themselves. We've looked at considering the three-foot setback requirement from the property line that's required by HCD, options for having a narrowing the access lane to twenty feet, and we came up with some options for potentially addressing encroachments, which could include requesting a variance for a setback from the property line, shifting mobile homes, replacing mobile homes with smaller mobile homes, relocating to another mobile home community, or modification of a mobile home. So although RTC is not responsible for removing unauthorized encroachments, we do understand the sensitivity of the issue facing our community. And so we've taken the lead on developing this draft report to look at these options for potentially removing the mobile home encroachments. RTC really needs the cooperation of property owners to further evaluate options for moving mobile homes. In terms of next steps, we're grateful to the City of Capitola staff for helping to facilitate a meeting with the Castle Mobile Home Estates property owners, and we will be meeting with them this week. RTC's intention is to identify, continue to identify the options for removing encroachments so that they can be resolved by the property owners and in coordination with the residents. We intend to update the draft report to further evaluate those options and if we can coordinate with the property owners to obtain additional information. We've been asked about the timing for the encroachment removal. The timeline that was indicated to the property owners as well as residents is a date of June 2025. State was established in order to ensure that the encroachments were removed prior to trail construction. At this point, we're not aware of any steps that have been taken to remove the encroachments, but we're looking forward to coordinating with the property owners to see how to move those, move the encroachment removal along. We've also received questions regarding the trail alignment in this area. For example, if a different trail alignment, such as removing the tracks and placing the trail on the tracks, may prevent the need for removing mobile home encroachments. Although it is unknown, staff expects that encroachments may still be in conflict with transportation purposes of this corridor, but potentially that the timeline for encroachment removal could be adjusted if they're not in conflict with the trail alignment as proposed. And here is a link to the draft report, which is on our website.
I would like to make note to everybody that this slide deck will be available on the City of Capitola's website tomorrow morning. So these QR codes, if you miss them right now, you can get them again tomorrow. That's going to be posted on the website.
Thank you. So in terms of trail maintenance, this is something else that the City of Capitola Council had asked us to address. So RTC will be the owner of the trail once the construction is completed and responsible for coordinating maintenance. Where there are portions of the trail have been already completed, the Regional Transportation Commission has entered into agreements with the city of Santa Cruz, the county of Santa Cruz, and the city of Watsonville to share some of those trail maintenance costs. These agreements are subject to negotiations between the local jurisdictions and the Regional Transportation Commission. Should construction of the trail along Park Avenue be pursued, that would be considered part of the coastal rail trail and included in any type of trail maintenance agreement. It is important, though, for us to note that the Measure D local sales tax that is largely utilized for funding development of the coastal rail trail and leveraging state and federal funds will not be sufficient to fund all maintenance of the coastal rail trail in perpetuity, which is one reason we are looking at opportunities for seeking additional funds for both the capital side and the trail maintenance side of things. Okay. All right. But last, a topic that I want to cover is an update on the zero-emission passenger rail and trail project, also referred to as ZEPRB. So, you know, we're talking about the Santa Cruz branch rail line. It was purchased in 2012 by the Regional Transportation Commission for transportation purposes. In 2021, RTC adopted a preferred scenario which identified high-capacity zero-emission passenger rail along and a multi-use bicycle and pedestrian trail within the branch rail line. In 2022, RTC moved forward to solicit proposals to begin some of the engineering for a concept and environmental documentation for the zero-emission passenger rail and trail project, and that work has been underway since 2023. So the concept, here's a map showing the concept of the passenger rail project that extends from the city of Santa Cruz to Paharo Junction, where it would connect to the state rail system, just south of Santa Cruz County in Monterey County. And this would be twenty-two miles of passenger rail project, as well as designing twelve miles of coastal rail trail from Rio del Mar to Paharo as well. And this project also includes the portion of the Capitola trestle that I discussed earlier, which we refer to as Segment 11 Phase 2, in looking at a combined passenger rail and bicycle and pedestrian bridge. We've been really busy on this project, if you've been following us. We are now at the point where we have a refined conceptual alignment. Our initial alignments were daylighted last June, so we've been working on those and incorporating the input we've gotten from community members and stakeholders since then. We are now looking at a draft project concept report coming out in this fall/winter timeframe. We've had a number of information sessions on this project. They're all posted on our website, so if you're interested, I do encourage you to visit our website. It has a lot of wonderful and great information, very informative. Okay, so we were talking about looking at the portion of the trail alignment, which is in west Capitola. And the reason we brought this up is because there's been questions about if the coastal rail trail project is, proposes to construct the trail within the rail corridor in this area. And yes, the project that Rob is working on and the county of Santa Cruz is leading. And yes, the project that Rob is working on and the county of Santa Cruz is leading is plans to construct the project within the rail corridor between 30th and 47th Avenue. Initial concept showed different alternatives, and what we're thinking now is that future options when passenger rail, if passenger rail should be implemented, would require additional right-of-way or an alternative route. But the project that we are pursuing now through the coastal rail trail is to construct the trail within the right-of-way in this area. Next steps, so we've been focused on stakeholder meetings and trying to identify issue areas associated with the passenger rail alignment. We're also having informational community sessions, as I mentioned, related to ridership and infrastructure associated with passenger rail. And then we'll have our draft concept report, as expected, to be available in August and then the fall/winter final concept report. So that concludes my update from the Regional Transportation Commission. Thanks for hanging with me while I have so much information to share.
All right. So a couple of housekeeping issues, real quick. Number one is if you are interested in speaking tonight, we have speaker cards here in this orange bin that you'll need to put your speaker card into. Is there anybody, if you are interested in speaking, raise your hand? If you haven't already turned in a card. Okay, great. Chloe will run around, keep your hand raised, and she'll either provide you with a card or you can deposit your card in there. All right, so we did go a little long on this first portion. I want to ensure that we are going to still hold 45 minutes aside for public comment so everybody will be able to, I shouldn't say everybody, the number of people that we can get through the 45 minutes will have the opportunity, we're not going to cut that portion short. We do want to try to stay as close to the posted timeframes, which was a 5:30 start, we started at 5:30, and a 7:30 end. But like I said, we are running a little long, so we will go past that 7:30 timeframe in order to allow for a full 45 minutes of public comment. Within public comment, you'll have two minutes. We'll have a timer. I'll be responsible for facilitating and getting people up here. I will tell, I'll let you know who's on deck and who's next up so that you guys can, we can run through these as quickly as possible so that we can get that public comment. The next phase that we're moving into are questions. So all of you, a large number of you, as you can see, 174 people submitted questions ahead of time to the city of Capitola. I spent several hours with city staff going through the questions and trying to identify themes, because you can't ask 418 questions and get answers to that. So we tried to identify themes, tried to make them as inclusive as possible and be able to cover the, what we thought was the subject matter that needed to be covered. We used two different AI models. We used ChatGPT paid version as well as Claude paid version to give us some insights. But ultimately, after many, many hours and lots of discussion, we came, right, because sometimes you get some weird funky questions from Claude. We tried to, like I say, create themes of questions that would then be able to answer multiple of the submitted questions. And I will juggle a couple of things here. So what's going to happen is we've got 11 total questions. We'll try to answer them as thoroughly as possible. With that, we'll just get started. All right, so question one, and I will say that the first three questions all came in at about 35% of the submitted questions are covered, or actually, these first three questions capture or hit about 35%, right? That was the largest number. And so we started with the largest number of sort of interest so that we can get to those questions first. So first question is why not keep the trail in the rail corridor? And there's a Capitola portion and a Park Avenue portion. And so the RTC and the county will answer those. And a lot of that was, a lot of the answers were discussed previously, but they'll try to put some fine point on the answers moving up.
Grace Blitzen with the Regional Transportation Commission. I hoped I was able to answer that question in part in my presentation and talking about the costs associated with the Capitola Trestle and the constraints we have around constructing bicycle and pedestrian facility within that area. What we have proposed is that as part of the longer term, to look at options for constructing either a combined or two parallel bridges, one for passenger rail and freight rail adjacent and another one for bicycle and pedestrian trail. That project was not included, and that portion of the project was not included in the current grant fund because of the potential cost for implementing that, but it is something that we are pursuing through the passenger rail and trail project.
Keep forgetting not to look into the projector. And just the other, the other points of note as far as the Capitola Trestle, there was no funding requested in the county's ATP grant for the conversion of the Capitola Trestle. So right now, the Segment 1011 project does not have funding for the conversion of the trestle. And I'll answer the Park Avenue portion of this question. Why not, why not keep the trail in the rail corridor along Park Avenue? I went through a lot of that, a lot of the advantages of the Park Avenue alignment over the coastal alignment in my presentation, and I know we're running late, so I won't get into all of those. But in general, we see the Park Avenue alignment as having greater benefits and less challenges than the coastal alignment. The main thing being that it has better connectivity to the neighborhood, which then increases the potential that someone will use the trail versus getting on Park Avenue on their bike and sitting being next to traffic. So better connectivity, potentially better safety along Park Avenue. It also has, as I mentioned, reduced costs, which improves the overall project delivery for the Segment 1011 project. And it's just, in general, in addition to being less expensive, easier to build, because that infrastructure that I showed previously is challenging to build, takes a lot of time. And so for all those reasons, that's why we're recommending the trail stays along Park Avenue. Thank you. So question two was, why is the Segment 10 and 11 project routing cyclists and pedestrians through the village? And so Rob is going to come back up, and then the city will answer as well.
Right, so it really is Grace mentioned above in her response to question one and is in her presentation, it's not feasible to have a trail on the Capitola Trestle as part of the Segment 1011 project. So really, the only way to get trail users from one end of the trail to the other was to go through the village. The project team, in collaboration with city staff, we did look at various alignments and options for routing trail users through the village during preliminary design and environmental review, and we determined that the proposed route along Cliff Drive, Stockton Ave., Capitola Ave., and then up Monterey Avenue was determined to be the most direct and offered the best existing bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure. In addition, as I mentioned previously, the improvements through the village are expected to improve what is out there right now and improve safety. And then Jessica may want to add a little bit more.
I'll just say, as we said in the presentation, the village obviously has a lot of congestion. There will likely always be congestion in the village outside of closing the streets to vehicle traffic. This really is meant to be an interim measure. The city does intend on doing studies, hopefully facilitated by this grant, to be permanent pedestrian and bicycle improvements in the village area.
All right, so thank you for that. Question three is, wouldn't it be safer to stick with an alignment within the rail corridor on Park Avenue? And we'll have Jessica start first.
So just briefly, as stated in the presentation, while Park Avenue does have in-lane bicycle lanes and also sidewalk on one side of the street, there is a documented speeding issue on Park Avenue. There's a direct correlation between vehicle speeds and incidences of collisions being fatalities. And so the bike lane being part of the street system makes it more likely that a collision will occur. What Rob is proposing with the rail trail, any alignment would be a separated facility. So bicycles and pedestrians who choose to walk on the other side of the street would be off of the roadway.
Thanks, and I'll just add that in general, as I mentioned in my presentation, both alignments offer similar safety improvements over the existing conditions in that, as Jessica mentioned, both alignments provide a multi-use trail that is separated from vehicular traffic. As to which alignment, the coastal trail versus the Park Avenue alignment, which one is safer, I think one can make an argument either way. As I mentioned, as part of question one, there's better connectivity and trail access with the Park Avenue alignment, which will improve safety because, again, more people are likely to use the trail and not ride on Park Avenue. And this is especially true for St. Francis School, for New Brighton Middle School here, since Park Avenue alignment connects to Washburn via crosswalk with the flashing beacons that I mentioned. And as many of you know, this is a primary route to get to New Brighton from Park Avenue. The coastal alignment has better separation from vehicular traffic in terms of avoiding an accident should a car run off the road into the trail. However, the project team, as I mentioned again in my presentation, we can look at installing vertical barriers between the trail and the roadway during final design, if desired by the community and the city.
Thank you, Rob. Okay, so question, oh, by the way, for any of you who are trying to follow along with the questions and then the answers, these, the question and the answer, because it's being recorded, we'll be able to transcribe them and put them onto the website as well, so they'll be transcribed there. Plus also, the video that's being captured will be there, so you can watch that again if you'd like. So we'll go to question four, which is, how is the city ensuring compliance with Measure L?
This is a similar answer to before, which is that that is up to the council how to interpret the ballot measure. A good overview of the legal issues that the council considered prior to the measure being placed on the ballot years ago is linked on the city's website. It's the 9212 report that the city attorney at the time prepared for the city. But it would be up to the city to determine how to interpret, how to interpret what's now in the Muni code, how to apply that to this project if they decide to move forward. And then if the city were sued from anyone in response to the council's decision, my office would support the city's choice, and a court would determine the validity of those arguments.
All right, thank you. All right, so those questions, those four questions were the top questions, generally the top four themes that were submitted. The next three or so fall into a lesser percentage, right in the 16% to 17% range of the questions that were submitted, touched on these next items. So I will move on to question number five, which is, how much money would Capitola save if the council approves the Park Avenue alignment, and what about the county slash the whole project?
So the city was to move forward with the Park Avenue alignment and coastal rail trail segments 10 and 11. We would not move forward with the project we've been working on for the past couple years for the Park Avenue traffic calming. The budget for that project was about $100,000, $20,000 of which has been expended on public outreach and preliminary design. The estimate we have for the project that we had designed is preliminarily about $120,000. So that is something that we would not budget extra money towards, and then the $80,000 that we currently have in the budget could be expended on road projects elsewhere in the city.
And in terms of the savings to the entire project for the county, I think I noted in my presentation, this Park Avenue alignment was recommended by the value engineering team. The value engineering team estimated that the Park Avenue alignment could save up to $13 million and reduce construction duration by six months. Internally, however, like again, as I mentioned previously, we think the savings will be less than that, and we'll know more about the expected costs estimates for the project later this summer when we have new construction estimates. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Question number six is, what happens to the county's funding if the city council votes no on the Park Avenue alignment? So I'll start and then Grace will finish this one.
So as, as we've discussed, the coastal alignment poses challenges to project delivery because it's more expensive and more difficult to build. And as a result, RTC and county staff don't recommend pursuing it. We initially thought that one potential solution to mitigate these risks if city council didn't approve the Park Avenue alignment would be to eliminate the .7 mile of trail between Monterey Avenue and Coronado Street from the project. However, when we spoke to Caltrans staff about this approach, they did not think the California Transportation Commission, which is the entity that ordered the grant, would approve an outright elimination of a .7 mile section of trail due to the reduction in overall benefits to the community from such a gap, and that likely the California Transportation Commission could reduce the grant amount significantly. So to avoid risking grant funding and to maintain the continuous trail for the benefit of the community, the county would request support from the RTC to move forward with the coastal alignment.
Yeah, and I would just add that as part of that, there would be the Regional Transportation Commission would need to consider what the additional cost was to implement the segment, the portion of Segment 11 along Park Avenue if they should pursue the coastal trail alignment. Measure D revenues are something that we discuss on an ongoing basis at the Regional Transportation Commission in order to strategically leverage state and federal funds and to strategically develop our coastal rail trail project. So as Rob mentioned, it's unknown if that portion of the project could be removed from the grant without jeopardizing the entire grant funding, and that would be something that staff would present as options to the Regional Transportation Commission should additional funding be needed. And I want to reiterate what Rob mentioned in his presentation, that due to the increased cost estimates we received, or that were presented last year to the commission, the commission instructed staff to conduct a value engineering analysis, and the recommendation for Park Avenue alignment was something that came out of that analysis. So that is what was directed to us by the Regional Transportation Commission to look at for costly measures. So staff would recommend pursuing that Park Avenue alignment to reduce the overall costs.
All right, thank you. So just before we move on, right, because I came in, I'm a non-participating person in all of this, right? I live outside, way outside of any of the rail trail stuff. And so as I was getting up to speed and trying to understand, there was a, I had a little confusion between Park Avenue alignment and the coastal rail alignment. Does everybody understand what that is? Okay. No, I'm not going to take questions. I just, I, I wanted to make sure that there was a, 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 understanding that between Park Avenue alignment and then the coastal trail alignment. Well, Park Avenue is, now I have to answer, I hate that. So the Park Avenue, as I understand it, Park Avenue alignment brings the trail right adjacent to Park Avenue. So the current street that's there, it brings it up in essence to the same elevation, same level, it's right next door, right next to it. It's got all the improvements that Rob had talked about with horizontal separation as well as vertical separation, there's a curb, and so it's built there. If you have, like I have, walked along Park Avenue on the non-sidewalk side, you can see the trail, the rail that's down below, which is down in the trench. And so the coastal rail alignment basically puts the trail next to the tracks down in that, in, in sort of that, that, down the embankment, right? And I'm not going to go into the specifics of all, Rob had that in his presentation very thoroughly. I'm just trying to explain it in a layperson's version, right? Park Avenue alignment is right next to the Park Avenue, and that's at road height preliminarily or primarily, and then the coastal rail runs next to the rail. Okay, so yeah, yeah, well, I'm not going to get into the, I'm not going to distinguish between the ownership of either of those, but I just wanted to let, I wanted people to understand because that can be confusing. Okay. So with that, we'll move on. I'll try not to go off script anymore, because I don't want to answer any more questions. All right, so question number seven, what happens to the larger county project? What happens to the larger county project and the $67 million Act of Transportation Planning Grant if Capitola doesn't approve the project? And I'll give it back to the experts.
We've, we've sort of addressed this, but I think a couple of things to highlight here that are new. Just, just note that when the county was preparing this Act of Transportation Program grant, we did coordinate with the city prior to submitting the grant. grant, we did coordinate with the city prior to submitting the grant application. The city submitted both a letter of intent to partner with the county, and in that letter committed to partnering to deliver the segments 10 and 11 project. And the city council also approved submitting a letter of support for the project on June 9th, 2022. That letter was signed by the mayor, and I have a couple quotes from the letter that I'm not going to read because we don't have time when we get to public comment. And I think the, the important thing to note here is that, you know, should the, should the city not approve the project, then you're looking at a, roughly a two-mile gap in the middle of a 4.2-mile trail. So it makes it essentially useless or reduces the benefits significantly. And in a situation like that, I think the likely scenario is that the CTC would just would, would kill the entire project, the CTC would clawback all of the $67.6 million grant funding, which, as I mentioned, is the largest ATP grant in state history. And so as a result, there's a lot of eyes in our region making sure we can deliver such a big transformative project. And I think one thing that could result from such an action and a failure from our region to deliver this project would be that we would, we would have less of a chance of getting very large competitive transportation grants in the future because we didn't demonstrate that we could deliver on, on the one that we got. So I think there's, there's a lot of fallout from that. And to avoid a lot of that, the county would likely pursue alternative permitting methods for the project to find it, to see if there are ways we could get around needing to go to the city council for permits, so going to the coastal commission directly or getting the project appealed to other entities. There's a lot of unknowns and uncertainty associated with that process, but in a scenario like that where you're looking at losing the entire grant funding and killing the project, we would look at all the alternatives possible.
All right, thank you. The, the question, we're, yeah, I was just going to say that the question was what happens to the, to the entire project if the city council does not approve the project, period?
Correct.
No. Okay. So, and then also, well, we'll, I'll mention it later, I'm not going to go off script again. The, the next question is question eight, which is what happens to the, what happens if the city council says no to any and all proposed improvements through the village?
Thank you, Jim. So the original designs for the project actually did not include any improvements through the village. Village improvements were omitted from the project scope at the request of the city. And so the $67.6 million grant in 2022 did not include any improvements through the village. The city changed their mind in mid-2023 during the environmental review process and requested that the project include minor improvements through the village, the ones that I showed in my presentation. This request was then formalized with the city's comment letter on the draft EIR in late 2023. And so as a result, we added all of those improvements that I showed in my presentation. So if the city council decides now that they do not want village improvements, we could explore removing those from the project scope and then let the city sort of address village circulation issues on their own. And I don't know if you want to add any more?
No, okay. All right. So the next three questions, there were nine, 10, and 11, were in another lower percentage, they were single digits primarily from about 8% all the way down to 3% or 4%. So these were lesser, but they still bubbled up as themes. And so question nine is what steps are required to implement a train and when could it realistically happen? I'll give that to you, Grace.
Thank you. So, you know, I provided an overview of what the RTC is doing now in terms of developing a concept for a rail alignment. And this is the first step in conducting some of the engineering studies for development of passenger rail on the Santa Cruz Branch rail line. The, the project concept report is expected to come before the Regional Transportation Commission in fall and for their discussion. The next step, if the project is, if the commission decides to continue to pursue, pursue passenger rail, would be to conduct an environmental analysis of the project. We currently, currently there is not funding identified for the environmental analysis. So that's something that RTC has been exploring options for. We were looking primarily at the corridor ID program through the federal government, and it looks now that that will be postponed, so it's unknown when the funding would be available for the environmental document. The other option that the commission has is to look at using additional Measure D revenues to pursue the environmental document. The cost estimate for that document is around $16 million, so it is a significant investment for our community and something that the regional transportation will have to consider. So that would be the, the next step. What else would be required to implement the passenger rail? There would have to be an investment in the infrastructure. I think if any of you attended our recent information session or the RTC's last meeting, we're looking at replacing the majority of the rail bridges along the corridor in order to pursue both combined passenger rail as well as freight rail along the corridor. So that's a significant investment. And then finally, we would need to have a local funding source to provide for maintenance and operations of the facility as well. So there are several steps that have to be completed prior to passenger rail being implemented. The question about when could it realistically happen? Well, right now, we're looking at pursuing at the earliest the environmental studies in 2027, and then also, as I mentioned, it would rely on passage of a local transportation sales tax that includes funding for passenger rail, which is unknown at this time.
Thank you very much. All right, so we'll move on to question 10, and Grace is ready for question 10, which is why don't we railbank?
Thanks for this question, I appreciate that. So the RTC, when it was considering dedicating, considering programming grant match funding in May 2022 for the coastal rail trail projects that are then later awarded state funding, they were asked that if they were interested in pursuing what was, we call the interim trail to then pursue railbanking. They did not take an action at that time, and since that time, staff has not been directed to pursue railbanking on the corridor. That, that is an action that could be taken by the freight operator to pursue railbanking, or it could be taken by a third party in order to pursue it with the Surface Transportation Board. So that, that regulatory process has not been initiated.
And then I'll touch on the third party. That's something new for the city. The city has learned that the city could be an applicant in a railbanking process with the Surface Transportation Board. It's something we are researching. We will be presenting more information about that, what a city-initiated railbanking process would look like at our special council meeting coming up on April 17th.
All right, thank you. We'll go to question 11, which is our final question, and that is why are we being asked to make the decision now, and can this decision be delayed until more information is available or further studies are completed?
Thank you, Jim. Could you actually go to the next slide? We got this. There we go. Great. So I showed this schedule to me in my presentation, and essentially, the project is under a deadline to request construction funding from the ATP program by April of 2027. This is two years away, which seems like a lot of time, you know, why do I have to make this decision now? But for a project of this size and complexity, we really need that entire two-year period to do all of the work that's needed to finish final design, permitting, right-of-way, there's utility relocations that need to be completed prior to going out to bid. And so final design and really this next step cannot be taken until there's an alignment selected for the Park Avenue area, whether that's the coastal alignment or the Park Avenue alignment. And we define a scope of work for that contract amendment with the consultant team that I mentioned is going to the board later this month. We had hoped to do that last month, we're now a month behind, and we really can't afford any further delays to this project without putting the grant funding at risk. So as I mentioned again, the city council supports moving forward with the Park Avenue alignment. The project team would be conducting additional environmental review and analysis of the Park Avenue alignment, including those potential impacts in Monarch Capitola this summer. That information will be incorporated into the project's EIR as either an addendum to the EIR or supplemental EIR, and then city council would consider those environmental impacts of the entire project prior to formally approving the project sometime later this year.
All right, thank you, Rob. Okay, so we are going to move into, I'm going to turn the lights on over here because we are going to move into the public comment portion. Watch your eyes. We're going to the fire station. Anybody turn on the lights without you knowing it, you can get in trouble. So, yeah, well, yeah, we're going to mix them up. So anybody, anybody needs to submit their card or wants a card. Is there, you're pointing this way, but I don't see. Okay. Fantastic. Chloe, don't go too, I need you, Chloe. Don't take all the cards because we want to start right away. So the way that's going to work, right, is that we're going to mix up the cards, we're going to pull them out. You only get to speak once. If you've submitted, if you've filled the ballot box, you only get one vote, so you only get to speak once. You get to speak for two minutes. We're going to, I know, I'm no fun. Everybody tells me that. Then we're going to get through as many people as we can in 45 minutes. All right? Again, I ask, please, we are a close-knit, friendly community, let's, yes, a question? Oh, you want to submit a card? Okay, now I can, I can talk and walk at the same time. So I, I ask that, right? Let's try to, let's respect one another, we all have different views at different times, certainly. More cards. And, you know, really try to, I mean, I know that you're going to be excited and happy about some things that people say and not about some things that people are going to say. So I can't tell you, you're not allowed to, we need to be quiet and be stoked, but let's please not intimidate the people, the speakers that are going to be trying to come up here and speak. All right, so with that, I'm going to have the first person come up, begin, get ready to speak, and then I'll have the next up and then the, the third up. Hope somebody submitted questions. No, we can't answer the questions. All right, so first person, Diane Dryer, if you would like to speak, please come up here. I also have Ed Spur. Ed, if you could come up here and sit in the chair, I've got two chairs up here, this is just going to help facilitate the speaking. And then Alyssa Burkhardt. Right there, so that'll be up next, and you want that because those are your, that's your comments. Very good. And then, all right, so please.
Thank you very much for having this really important and very informative, extremely informative meeting tonight. I'm glad so many people are here to get the facts about what the agencies are considering. I didn't prepare something and I didn't know I'd be going first. But I think what I want to say to everyone is, we really, as a community, we really need to think about the future. It's not likely that we'll get passenger rail in the next 12 or 15 years, but we will need it. The people who live in this county and beyond will need it in another 15, 20, 30, 40 years. We need to think big picture, not our own little, little tiny world. So thinking about climate change, it's a big crisis, and every community has to push ahead with solving that big problem. So that's all I'm going to say for that.
All right, very good. Thank you for your comments. Ed, you're next. The next one after Alyssa is going to be Sally Honoron. So Sally, if you could make your way up front, please.
Wow, a billion dollars for bridges. That's more than I make in a year. Realistically, I was excited when we bought the, the right-of-way because we were told we could have a train and a trail and everything would be great. And then when I started attending the public outreach from the RTC, it was clear, clear from the start that they would only consider a train. And as we moved along over the last 12 years, we find it's a single track, there's no place to put it, there's not really a need for it. The 2015 study said that there was, it wouldn't reduce any highway one traffic. So is it really feasible? And now we're told we have to wait another few months before our feasibility study comes up. We've spent tens of millions of dollars on these studies, and now we're asked to make a commitment for a narrow bike lane going through town, which is extremely dangerous, and otherwise we'll lose our funding. Now, we have a good bus system in this county. It's not run very well, but it can be improved, and it works. It's point-to-point. The train only goes from here to there, and there's the last mile to consider. So let's consider railbanking this wonderful right-of-way that we have. And if we need more time, let's come up with something that's going to make our community, as we grow, a safer place to ride our bikes, to walk and to enjoy each other. And now we've got electric bikes. You know, it's like things are changing very quickly. So let's, let's not go with the 20s.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Alyssa?
Hi, my name's Alyssa. I'm a regular biker and bike commuter through Capitola. I just had a few comments on moving the bike route through the downtown village area. Right now, I do go through the village on a very regular basis, and I've noticed that the cars that are parallel parked, especially along Capitola Avenue and Monterey, are basically opening their doors into the bike lane, which is extremely hazardous, and I'm very worried about getting dored every time I go downtown. So I'm suggesting one way to alleviate that might be to reduce the parallel parking, especially along Capitola and Monterey Avenue, just with that downtown block to eliminate the frequency of potentially doring bikers. Also, on today's presentation, I noticed that the bike lane is frequently crossing the railroad tracks. Just want to make sure that that's very safe for bikers. Bike tires can easily get caught in railroad lines. I've fallen twice and it's pretty severely hurt crossing railroad tracks. So just make sure that there's a clear, parallel, like safe way to cross the railroad tracks as a bike crosses the tracks. And then finally, the barrier areas, the picture that was shown had a lot of boulders in it. If you fall on a bike and then you hit your head on one of those boulders, it's going to hurt a lot. Maybe just keep that soft, like keep it grassy, like not having large, dangerous protective areas that could hurt bikers if they fall. That's it, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Before you start, Sally? I want to get the next two speakers up here so that we can keep moving along. So I have, is it Cami? Oh, Cami Crumb? There you go. Perfect. See, you didn't think I was going to call your name. And then Jonathan Evans. Jonathan Evans, come on up here, please. All right, thank you, Sally.
Well, I, yeah. I just want to thank the, the many staff members who've prepared presentations today. Most of this I'd seen before, but I was impressed with how people really were like, take giant long presentations and get to the point really fast. But some new stuff that I've heard was really shocking to me, and that was, that if I understood this correctly, that the staff are concerned that if Capitola doesn't approve this little section of trail that looks very well-developed to me, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm pretty timid cyclist, and it seems fully protected and separated from the road, it's just, you know, at road level rather than in the ditch, which adds a woman cycling alone, I would feel better up there anyway. But that our county could lose $67.6 million that's not to be spent necessarily in Capitola, but in other parts of our county for safe bike infrastructure, and then basically we kind of look like chunks to the state and they wouldn't want to give us any more money for other transportation projects. I find that to be a very frightening result of, of a decision. And I think that, you know, there's all kinds of other concerns people have about trestles and tranglers and other stuff, but right now, all really the city councils being asked to do is decide, should we get some free bike infrastructure along Park Avenue? And that seems like a pretty And that seems like a pretty easy decision to make. And, you know, we can disagree about other things, about trains and trestles, and we could fight about that later. But I think we could, you know, let's get some safety infrastructure now and not ruin our county's credibility with other, with state funders. Thank you.
If I could get, uh, Daniel, uh, Stagg, uh, Daniel knows who he is. Great, thanks. Come on up.
Well, thanks, Mayor Clark and city council members and RTC. I want to thank you for taking the time on this and, and my wonderful neighbors here in, uh, Capitola, so thank you for, for showing up today. Um, I'm going to try not to pull a Cory Groper and, uh, be here all night long, but I, I, I do want to express some concerns. I've been in the law field for probably as long as Joe, as I think republicanism would do here, as long as we've, about fifty years. And, you know, I took an oath of office, uh, many, 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 many times. And what I want to talk about, we just, we keep going back and forth on all this stuff, and, and I'm kind of actually, to be honest with you, really tired of, of all the disagreement and everything that's going on. But what I want to talk about is accountability for the city of Capitola and RTC. And I kind of feel like there's a lot and a lot of misinformation, misleading information that's going out there. For instance, tonight, uh, I live in the mobile home community. So maybe you may not realize that this affects us deeply. It's very stressful for us right now. Uh, we're not sleeping. Uh, we're worried about whether or not we're going to have a home in our retirement age that we saved our money for. This is all we could afford. And although I'm in total disagreement for the village situation going down there, um, my family's been here a hundred years. I, I, I know what the, this whole thing is going to look like. I think that, that people need to be accountable for misleading information and making sure that it gets to the people here appropriately. One of the misleading information is, yeah, RTC sent us letters, but they sent us two letters. We actually responded back to a letter. Uh, and now the, the meeting on the fourth is going to be with the management's attorneys and RTC's attorneys, as well as Capitola. So we may not be aware of that, and we are going to fight this. And, uh, we're baby boomer seniors and we're not letting go, but I'm going to vote for the measure L situation. Hopefully you guys will take that into consideration. The congestion, I always say Capitola, it has ten thousand residents, but during the summer they have three million. So let's take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. If I could get Lynn Gany to please come up? Give me a second, and you're, you're good.
Jonathan Evans, I want to thank county and city staff for helping us navigate, figure it out, literally, literally, uh, some difficult situations through the, the county and, uh, and, uh, the city. Uh, as a frequent cyclist, including cycling some of the proposed rail trail tonight, uh, through Capitola Village, I support the staff's plans for the Park Avenue alignment, especially Option B. It reduces costs, reduces long-term environmental constraints, and takes advantage of important funding sources, uh, but have a limited timeframe. Please improve the Park Avenue alignment. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. So if I could get, somebody just put Katie down. Is there a Katie? Come on up. Daniel, please.
All right, uh, thank you, everybody. Thank you, uh, for putting together this, uh, town hall meeting. I'm just coming up here and basically speaking as a, a business owner and as a resident of Capitola, and, um, I just prepared a, um, a little, uh, comment here, uh, to kind of just really go over, I think, looking at the overall beauty of the Capitola Village, and I think that's kind of what we're maybe missing on some of the, uh, other issues that are, you know, surrounding this, and, you know, the more and more I look into this, it brings up more questions, um, and, um, you know, I'm deeply concerned, you know, regarding the proposed, you know, rail, and, um, and I'll just go and read, you know, what I have written here. It's basically the concern about the, um, irreversibility and the impact to the proposed rail and truck project will have on the historic village, the local economy, and the quality of life, um. You know, I believe this, you know, plan is overlooking and, you know, disregarding some of the, the Section one oh six compliances, um, that I've read up on, uh, which protects the historic sites and ignores the measure at home, which voters passed to preserve the Capitola's unique charm. Uh, the project will bring increased traffic and congestion and disrupt the businesses and alter the beauty and the character of our village, all without clear funding or necessity. I urge the council to pause this project and demand full transparency to ensure the Capitola's interests, not outside the agenda. Capitola Village by the Sea, let it be.
Thank you for your comments. Barry Newman. Barry Newman, if you could come up front. You're good? Okay, never mind. Uh, the next one would be Mark, Mark Drummond. Please, sir.
Okay. I just want to thank everybody for being here. This is a really volatile question and a situation. I have been a Capitola resident for forty-five years. I've moved to Aptos, but my heart is still here. I've raised five children here. And I think that Capitola has a very special place in everybody's heart, even those who come. The idea of putting more traffic through downtown Capitola and taking away parking places, I understand about doors opening into a bike. I had that happen with one of my kids in the back who got knocked over on the bike, so I understand that. But we need to try to figure out a way to be able to work together to benefit the greater population without just being worried about a bucket of money that we got from the state. And I have a question on that is, how do we find out whether, or who finds out if Capitola votes no on this section? Is that money being clawed back, or do we just find a different group around to intersect the rest of the trail? I hear what feels like threats that, oh, we're going to lose it all. We're going to lose millions of dollars if Capitola doesn't acquiesce. I find that not acceptable, and I also find that not a good, strong, honest, straightforward answer. And in our country right now, we as United States Americans need to stand up and try to find out the truth about what's going on and represent that to all of our constituents here and our nation. And I feel passionate about that. So thank you for everybody who's here and what you're doing, but I would like to get the answer of, is that money clawed back? Or do we just find an alternative group that's going to not impact Capitola? Because all of the traffic comes through is the economic growth and substantiation for our small little village. Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be Katie, and then if I could get Barry Scott to come up?
All right, thanks for having us. Um, one thing I just wanted to point out, I guess I was a little curious, um, your proposal for narrowing the roads. Sort of scratching my head, feeling like, aren't cars getting bigger? Or is that just me? I feel like I see a lot of big SUVs and trucks, but maybe that's just me being an environmentalist. Oh, why are these cars getting bigger and bigger? So I looked it up, and there's actually a phenomenon going on. In the U.S., vehicles they've found from two thousand thirteen to twenty twenty-three have increased in length by twelve percent. That's over two feet. And more importantly, they've increased in width by seventeen percent. They're now a foot wider, the vehicles that consumers are wanting to buy. Whether that makes them feel safer, I don't know, perhaps. And that's fine, that's the consumer's choice. But I just don't know that narrowing the roads is now going to work as we start to see these larger cars on the road. I don't bike every day, but I do enjoy biking, and I feel that when I'm in the bike lanes, we've got rear or side view mirrors in our bike lanes already. So I'm not sure that this is taken into consideration, but I think it should be. I'm not sure that narrowing the roads is going to work when we have these vehicles continuing to get larger. But perhaps, like, I can't remember the fellow's name, said about rail banking, and now we have a very safe place to walk and bike on the railway that's just paved over, in a safe place with no worry about a train or any vehicles, I think could be really an excellent thing for our community. That was all. I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you. If I could get Clark Cockran to please come up here? How's he?
Again, I really like to thank everybody here. I know there's hard decisions, and, uh, people spend a lot of time and money on things. My background, uh, is in large project construction. I've lived in San Cruz since, oh, eighteen sixty-one. Lived in Capitola here for over twenty-five years. I've seen the traffic, we've all seen the traffic and everything. Uh, thank you for the comment for narrow roads. Uh, being, having put in a lot of roads myself, I think it's a huge mistake. We've got, I think it does nothing but cause congestion and slowing things down. That would be one, that would be one comment of mine. I would like to see everybody follow the intent of Measure L and stay along the tracks. I think it's very, very important that we do that. Stay off the Park Avenue, uh, stay on the tracks, fix the trestle, whatever we got to do, but down in the village, I mean, I feel like we, uh, I feel like, for the Capitola residents, I feel like we're asked to cut off a leg to get a, uh, anti-cap placard. In that sense, and, um, yeah. It's just, uh, anyway, that one of the things, too, is if the RTC goes down the village, Capitola loses control of, of our village down there. Now, that property belongs to RTC now. During the future, uh, for our village and everything, I think that's something we've got to think about. That and the super congestion along, um, you know, uh, in the village and, and on Park Avenue and everything. I would like to thank you for the sidewalk down Park Avenue. That's wonderful, uh, really, I use it all the time, but, uh, thank you again for being here. I know you've got a lot of hard decisions, but, uh, there's a lot of people here that want to go through the village.
If I could get Barry before you start. If I could get Ariel Gray to come up, please. Thank you, very honored.
Uh, thank you. I want to thank, thank city staff and county and RTC staff for all the artwork. Uh, my name is Barry Scott. I live one point eight miles outside of Capitola, uh, in Aptos. I, uh, my, my undergraduate study was in architecture and planning. Uh, that's five years, and three years before that I was in undergrad construction. I've been following the developments of the rail trail for eleven years, longer than some of the RTC staff. And I want, I just want to appeal to everybody to think open-mindedly. The, uh, if you look around, we are building the trail. Uh, San Cruz, for example, has an experience of sharing space, the city, with the county to make projects happen, finding funding jointly to make things happen. The same is true in Watsonville. I need to say, I, I put my name in because I want to speak for the county that isn't Capitola. The, the right-of-way belongs to the county. It's a county-owned piece of infrastructure. I don't believe attempts at rail banking are going to be successful because I talked to all of the city council members, all of the supervisors, and I don't think there will ever be the majority required to pursue a rail banking approach. And I know that a lot of people have been, uh, convinced that a rail banking thing could be, could happen, that we could just build the trail and the tracks, and that that could just happen in two years or something. It's not going to happen. I encourage you to do the research and find out what will happen. And I hope that, uh, the city will approve Park Avenue Option A or B. But I just appealed to everybody to do some research. Thank you.
If I could get Sydney Arabin. Please. Clark, go ahead.
Thanks, uh, Clark Cockran. I'm a resident of Capitola. Um, sitting here listening to this information, appreciated. It made me come up with some thoughts, and so I'm just going to randomly come up with, uh, things that, that made me think about. First of all, we have to think trail. Um, we're talking a billion dollars for the trestles and the bridges. Is that tomorrow? Is that next year? Is that next decade? Trail. I'm not saying we can't have rail, but it's going to be a lot in my lifetime. So, and it's also not the city's place to bend its own rules to save RTC money. The trestle needs reinforcements. The trestle reinforcements can be made. Staff said, RTC staff said eleven million dollars? Paved it over and use it as a trail for now. Not the greatest, but it works. And it'll happen in our lifetime, and we can keep using it. We run it through the village, we know that's going to be semi-permanent. It's not going away, and that's not what we want. Nobody wants that. Uh, there is room for a trail-only pass to mobile homes. Let's use trail through there. Rail in somebody else's lifetime. Uh, the city council must follow its own rules. We have to stay in the quarter or it has to be put to a public vote. That's what Measure L says, that's what our, uh, CMC, Capitola Municipal Code says. So, and no more tar tracks, taxes for rail. Even though the RTC intimated, it's going to go over our heads if they don't like our decisions. They're our decisions. Let's fight them. It's our city.
All right, thank you. If I could get Brian Peoples to come up here, please. Ariel?
Hi, Ariel Gray, I'm the president of Capitola. I want to thank all of you for your presentations tonight. Um, some of the things I heard are that a decision on Park Avenue alignment is needed this month. Rejecting the Park Avenue alignment incurs risks to Capitola in getting a trail along Park. The rail banking process could extend beyond grant deadlines, and it also creates an obstacle to implementing the rail, which goes against the overwhelming majority and voice of our community for Measure D in twenty twenty-two. So this leads me to believe that approving the Park Avenue alignment is the approach that gets us a trail in Capitola the fastest. Any other decision, whether it's rejecting the Park Avenue alignment, waiting for additional reports, or pushing for the interim trail invites a scenario with risks, delays, and uncertainty. I especially support Option B, which has less cost and maintains the three-foot barrier. I also heard that interpreting city code is under Capitola City Council jurisdiction. So I would urge the city council to acknowledge that no Capitola funds are being used, and in fact, we've saved eighty thousand dollars. And for any county project, I would hope that Capitola's city resources would work with the county. And I'd urge the city council to consider this with government, not a violation of Measure L. So moving forward with the Park Avenue alignment also allows for a future project that gets us trail with the trestle. So please support Park Avenue alignment. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So next up, if I could get Karen Kowalski? Thank you. Just go ahead.
Hey, guys, happy Wednesday. So the rail project is the sum of all of its parts. The ongoing planning and design efforts by RTC staff involve designs for a trail and rail. This means that the design for every segment will have both. However, there could be segments with only rail if certain jurisdictions, such as Capitola, push back on efforts to design, fund, and build rail-trail sections. The choice before you is something, a funded and safe rail, or nothing. No rail, no trail, just rail. If the vote is delayed against the design of the Park Avenue rail-trail segment, it will be removed from the project. This means that every resident who wants a safe and protected way to commute from Cliffwood Heights to Capitola Village will have to settle for the city-funded effort to improve the bike lanes directly on Park Avenue. Please approve the trail as proposed.
Thank you. If I could get Stephanie, just says Stephanie, wrote on a yellow card. Is that you? Fantastic. I will bring the mic to you, and it's your turn.
Hi, I'm Brian Peoples with Trail Now. I first got involved with RTC over 25 years ago. So I'm pretty well knowledgeable, and I will tell you right now, they're using scare tactics for you. So for example, I've spoken to the CTC administrator. The Capitola trestle can be integrated into the grant, okay? First of all, that's number one. Secondly, what they're not really telling you is they're using the scare tactics on rail banking. Actually, what they're proposing on A and B, that's not part of the current EIOC, and that's going to actually take longer than rail banking. Let me explain to you about rail banking. It's a simple process. It's not a legal process. It's a simple administrative process. It's a federal process where the application gets submitted. If Rory Kemp was to oppose it, and they lose, which they would, they can't sue. It's not like eminent domain. It's a very structured process, you guys. It's a permitting process. So the rail banking, they're using a scare tactic. They're telling you that it's going to take too long. We actually went into the database for the STV. They average about four to six months to railbank. Once you submit your rail banking application, you can begin the process of pulling the rails up. So now, if you build the trail, the interim trail, which was part of the original plan, it's a fraction of the cost. It's like $2.5 million to build a beautiful trail where the tracks are versus $25 million a mile. They're using scare tactics. You're not going to lose the money. Don't allow them to scare you. We need to save the Capitola trestle. This is your only chance, Capitola. You're going to lose the Capitola trestle if you allow RTC to come in here and say, oh, you gotta, you gotta, you gotta, you gotta have your trail on Park Avenue. Guaranteed, right now, you gotta make your scam. Thank you.
I understand you are through that, but I'm trying to get through as many people as possible. Please, right? You can, you can support, but I need to get through some people. Carl Seaver, you're next up, please.
All right. Thank you very much. I'm Karen Kowalski. I'm a Capitola resident. I disagree with the downtown Capitola for all the congestion and everything stated earlier, so I'm not going to waste my time on that. I also heard tonight that if Capitola doesn't approve, then the whole rail trail is at risk. I might have misunderstood at the beginning on the budget slides, but I think there's an $18.3 million shortfall in the budget. And then there's a federal raise grant that was $8.4 million. And I want to know if that raise grant is guaranteed, since so many federal grants are being rescinded across the country and the speed train in California, funding is also at risk. So if I did my math right, that would be another $26.7 million shortfall. And so how does that relate to if Capitola doesn't approve, the entire project goes down? So I am curious about that, and I look forward to that answer in the future. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So I'm over here. Stephanie's over here, and I'm going to hand her my mic.
Hi, my name is Stephanie, 12-year resident now of Capitola. And my concerns are primarily, I consider myself, you know, in a wheelchair, so I consider myself an advocate for seniors and disabled throughout the county. And my concern is twofold. Of course, we're all concerned about the equality, right? We have to be. We don't have a choice. And I'm always wondering how it makes sense that, we live in one of the most beautiful places in the world, right? And yet California doesn't have a rail system. How does that make sense? It seems like we're backwards. And so then when I look at, you know, our rail proposal, I'm also looking at it from the perspective of, don't forget, we have a severe tsunami coming on. Capitola is going to be one of the first counties in California to be hit by this rapid aging. So we're going to have by 20, by 2030, our population is going to be significantly older. And of course, the disabled population correlates with that. So I'm looking at, okay, what kind of transportation are we going to have available for our seniors and disabled? I'm also looking at, and I know this project doesn't necessarily immediately address, but does it make sense that we don't really have transportation over the hill? So when we're talking about rail and transportation, what are we talking about here? Now, having a trail, you know, I think is super important, and it's going to help people in wheelchairs as well. So those are the questions that I'm thinking about.
Very good. Thank you. So the next two, if you could move up to the front, is Johanna Whitehill and Elliot Campbell. Go ahead, Carl.
Hi, thank you very much. I'm Carl Seaver. I graduated from this wonderful institution 60 years ago this coming June. We didn't have this. We had a cave inside of a tree stump, so we're going to get drunk. I've stressed before, when I've had the opportunity to speak, that I don't see here many people talking about this in terms of investment. In the future, and in jobs, and opportunities, I'm for rail and trail. I want to see both, and I would use both, utilize both. And I don't want to see that trestle messed with, except to be utilized for both. That's what it should be. I don't want to see traffic going, or bike traffic, pedestrian traffic hazarded into the, into the village. It should, it's a village. Anyway, back to my prepared script. Consider the employment opportunities, jobs, green jobs in construction, green jobs probably in the maintenance, but a lot of jobs, a lot of local employment opportunities in the construction of rail and trail. This is something that can be expanded and improved upon. And what happens if this doesn't go through? Yeah, folks who can walk and ride bikes will have the opportunity. But what about folks who need transportation because their wheelchair's out? Groups, senior citizens, people who don't have bikes, people who just want to commute. We can walk and chew gum in this beautiful place of innovation and good minds. And I just, I hope and pray we can see both and do both. I've traveled, my career blessed me with opportunities to travel around the country and the world, and I've seen where rail works. And I don't understand why we can't do it here. Thank you very much.
Okay, excellent. We've got about 10 minutes left, right around that. So that would be right around five speakers. All right, we've got, the next up would be Teri Thomas.
Hi there. My name's Johanna, and I live in Stee Cliff. And I just wanted to comment about the safety on the Park Avenue diversion that's proposed. Thank you, staff, for the presentation. It was very good. I noticed that on the slide, the reason for the diversion, there was no mention of safety. And although they addressed it briefly, I'd like to talk about that a little bit more. The Caltrans Highway Design Manual was the primary resource for designing the Monterey Bay Sanctuary scenic trail. And in it, they state, excuse me, sorry. Bike paths immediately adjacent to the streets and highways are not recommended. And what that means is that while they continue, while they can provide separation between vehicles and non-motorized traffic, they typically introduce significant conflicts at intersections. They are not a substitute for designing of the road to meet the bicyclist's mobility needs. I think, I mean, I ran out of time, sorry. The proposed plan removes the existing active transportation, an existing sidewalk and two bike lanes, and replaces it with one eight-foot bike path. And yes, it is an eight-foot bike path, because all paths, according to Caltrans, require shoulders. So when they call it a 12-foot path, it's really eight feet, and that matters because eight feet is the minimum for a bike path. Shared used paths are recommended to be 10, 12, 14 feet plus shoulders. National guidelines, handbooks explain that in very rare circumstances, an eight-foot path may be used when bikes are not expected to be in high, a lot, or pedestrians. So it's an unsafe trail, and I hope that you'll respect that.
Great. Thank you, sir. So here's the lineup for the, if I could get, so Teri Thomas is up here. Kevin McGuire, Susie Merriam, Merriam, and Debbie Hale. That'll be our speaker lineup for this evening.
Thanks so much. Appreciate the opportunity to comment. It's great seeing so many people here. We all love Capitola. That's why we're here. My family moved in the 60s. I have my house across the street. I raise my kids there. And that grants me to, some of the people who aren't here tonight, see a few kids in the room, but not too many. So I just wanted to speak on behalf of my kids. One of them is biking across town right now. The other one's working on a science fair project in our house. They bike down in the village all the time. They go down there to get candy and burritos, to go surf. We really appreciate the opportunity to improve any infrastructure for them to go down in the village. I really like the idea of Park Avenue. They're up, they're visible. We can see them. People are calling this a trench. I don't know if that's the technical word, but I really like having my kids visible. I just would really appreciate moving forward with something. It was, a little while ago, we had some friends out here for our anniversary. We're having our 10th anniversary, and they looked at that rail and went, oh, wow, that's amazing. You guys aren't doing anything with that? And I'm like, well, it's a long story. This morning, my wife reminded me that next year is our 20th anniversary. And gosh, it'd be amazing to see something happen, so these kids can get around a little bit safer. Thank you.
Thank you. Teri?
Thank you all for your hard work and devotion to this issue. We have lived on Park Avenue for 52 years. We do not appreciate having Option A and B rammed down our throats as if they are the only options. They are not. The idea of having a redundant trail on Park Avenue when we already have a sidewalk and two bike lanes is ridiculous, especially when it means losing 25 parking spaces that are used often, and nearly all the trees along the street, according to the plans, except along Escalona Village. Removing these trees and their roots will degrade the hillside, the steep hillside, causing it to collapse onto the tracks and erode the soil under the proposed trail, thus compromising it as well. If you can, use the sidewalk, widen the existing bike lanes, and narrow the traffic lanes to reduce speeding. Problem solved. There is little or little incentive for people to walk along Park Avenue unless they live in the neighborhoods or go to New Brighton Beach. There are no other nearby destinations. Better yet, put the trail on the coastal side of the corridor as originally planned and designed. That's where it belongs, even if money is an issue. Best option, railbank, using the track bed for 30 years until you can fully fund a train. We go to Portland several times a year, and I always notice how few riders there are in their light rail trains, and we have a much smaller population. One more thing. We greatly resent people who do not live in Capitola telling us what we need. We should only be listening to people who live here.
Thank you. Kevin McGuire, you're up. Then we've got Susie, and then Debbie.
Hello, Kevin McGuire. Some of you know me or see me at the council meetings or going out around town. I've lived here for all my life, so a little over 50 years now. I run Bike Capitola, and I ride Park Avenue almost every day with my dog. It's safe. We have two safe bike lanes, eight feet wide in certain parts. So light bike lane, I'm going 60 miles an hour with my dog. You want to combine me with pedestrians on a single 12-foot path together, going different directions, that's not safe. 2023, RTC presented the ultimate trail, interim trail. They've had time to look into rail banking. The director, Sarah Christensen, just sent an email to our city manager about a month ago, talking about rail banking. Said it wasn't advised because of the timing. They've had time to look into this. They had time to do what's right for us. Not this Option A or B. It's not going to make it better on Park Avenue. It's going to take our land. They said we can't gift, gift property to the mobile homes. So we're supposed to gift our property to the RTC? That's not right. We're going to lose parking spots. We're going to lose the coverage of parking spots. We're going to lose ADA access to the trail. With no parking there, I don't know how you're going to get down with a wheelchair from Coronado. There's going to be less stations with high-speed intercity rail. But yeah, let's just do what's safe, what's right. And we don't have the money. We're not going to approve the taxes. We're not going to have a train till the $225 million gets funded to replace the trestle. I mean, we just, we need a trail now, and not through the village. Thank you.
Susie, thank you. Susie, and then Debbie, and I'll give you some statistics afterwards.
Thank you. Yeah, it is, it is fun being back in, in this room, that the school that I went to and my daughter went to as well. It's great, great to be back here. Just, I, I'm supporting the rail and the trail as well. It's a long-term vision for the future of Santa Cruz and, and our kids and our grandkids. Who knows when the train is actually going to get here? But what's really exciting to me is the trail that's already being built throughout our county. And now Capitola has this wonderful opportunity to get improvements built along Park Avenue for relatively free, with additional funding for planning of those improvements. I support the staff plan for the rail trail alongside Park Avenue. Some people might prefer a different location, but the staff project is the only one that can actually be built with the grant money that is available today. The funding will be lost, and there won't be any trail at all along this corridor if the city council does not support this. So I recommend the support of the plan.
And then our last speaker for the night will be Debbie.
Hello. My name is Debbie Hale, and I'm a 30-year Capitola resident. And I'm also the retired director for the transportation agency for Monterey County. So I know a little bit about some of the issues that we're facing and some of the choices that we have. And it seems really clear to me that even though I'd love to see rail in, in the future, we don't know if that's going to happen. We don't know how the money's going to go. And clearly, our community is divided throughout the whole county. But what I do know is that this was our chance to get a much safer pathway for bicyclists and pedestrians and disabled folks and people that can't walk very fast. Like my parents, who used to live right along Park Avenue. I would love to see a nice contiguous path that would make it so much safer. I'm a bicyclist. I walk around town all the time. And I, I think it's great to think we're going to have improved intersections in the village and a look at a trestle improvement in the long run, although I'm a little scared about biking that high up in the air. But I, I want to see this path move forward so that we can have a nice, safer path for us to, to get around town without having to drive in all the traffic. I love the fact that we're going to have narrower lanes on Park Avenue because people speed, and narrower lanes slow people down. So we're going to have traffic moving below the speed limit. We're going to have a separate path for, for us, well, maybe at the speed limit, you're right. We're going to have a separate, protected, raised path that I can walk on to get to New Brighton. Maybe kids can go to the skate park on. And I'm going to have a safer way for me to, you know, bike as I'm biking out of town.
All right. So thank you. That concludes the public comments section. We got through 24 speakers, so that's pretty good. There were only 11 cards left, so if you had submitted a card and you did speak There were only eleven cards left, so if you submitted a card and you didn't speak tonight, I apologize. You do have an opportunity. Two weeks from now, April seventeenth, will be a special city council meeting specifically on this topic. It's going to be in the council chambers. And so I encourage you to be there and we'll, you know, be continuing the conversation. All right, so with that, was there, there is, I think, one comment Jamie wanted to make?
There was one point that came up that I heard in a number of different, from a number of different speakers, and this was about what happens if Capitola says no, right? And there's two parts to Capitola potentially saying no. There's Capitola saying no to the Park Avenue alignment, and then there would be no to the entire project overall. And I think one of the reasons why it's difficult to sort of parse out exactly what would happen is that nobody in this room would make that decision. That decision, those decisions would be made by the RTC board, and they would be made by the CTC, the California Transportation Commission. So I think what you heard from the planners and the project managers on this is that the more Capitola says no, the more project risk we enter into. But ultimately, whether the RTC would godfill the funding or whether the CTC would agree to project scope changes, they're just not decisions that anyone in this room knows the answer to, and they're made by people who aren't here. So I hope that helps clarify that, because I heard a number of people say it would happen, it wouldn't happen. It introduces risk. And the more risk you introduce into a major public works project, obviously, it makes everybody more and more nervous. So I hope that helps. And then I think there was one other clarification that Rob was going to make, and then last there, Miriam was going to thank us all.
Thanks, Jamie. I, I think just to, just to add to that a little bit, I, I think there's a, there's a misunderstanding that if Capitola says no to the current proposal, that means there's a trail on the trussel. And I, I think what we tried to explain tonight is that there are additional hurdles and actions that would have to take, that would have to happen for that to take place. So simply saying no to what the project is proposing in the village does not then create a trail on the trussel. That would require rail banking, whether that's a vote by the RTC or it sounds like maybe the city of Capitola will explore that option. That has to take place first, and then there has to be funding found to, to do the conversion of the trussel to a trail. So I just wanted to reiterate that point, because I think that's, that, there was a little bit of confusion that I felt like from some of the commentators. And then the, the, the issue of safety for the Park Avenue alignment, I just wanted to address that a little bit, because I heard that in some of the comments. So this is, this is not a, so the, the trail is consistent with the California Highway Design Manual. The HDM says, does not recommend a trail adjacent to the roadway. And that's why they recommend and require a buffer between a roadway and a trail, which is what we're doing for this project. And I want to reiterate, we do have a vertical curb, just like you would on a sidewalk, and there is a minimum three-foot horizontal buffer. And the last thing, just again, addressing those safety concerns, I know that's a real issue for folks. Happy to look at as part of this project with city staff, if there's a need for a vertical barrier between the trail and the roadway so that folks feel safer using the Park Avenue alignment. That is certainly something we can look at. So just wanted to reiterate that. We do have traffic engineers on the project that are looking into all these issues, and we are compliant with all of the regulations. So, thank you.
Well, we got a lot of good information. I'd like to thank our city staff for the work they've done. I'd like to thank the RTC for all the work they've put in. And I'd like to thank Chief Farley for being our facilitator tonight. Thank you, everybody. Also thanking New Brighton Middle School. Thank you for letting us use the facility. It's fun watching this place be built, and we get to use it. Maybe we'll get a trail to do the same way. Our next regular city council meeting will be April tenth. Hope to see half as many people there, if not all. We're not going to be talking about rail trails. That would be on our special meeting coming up later after that. But again, I really appreciate everybody coming, all the great comments. Everybody talking from the heart, it's good stuff. So with that, this meeting will be adjourned. Thank you very much for coming. Take care of each other, and be safe.